The time is 5:38. Today's date is August 30th, 2017. And I call this special board meeting of the Wesco ISD to order. Item number one. Item number two, establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect that all are present with the exception of Andrew Gonzalez. Item number four, discussion and possible action for the board to appoint an agency for property and casualty insurance, boiler and machinery, inland marine, and flood. I was addressed by legal counsel that before we get into the next couple of items, that he's going to advise us on some legal issues that we could be facing on the next couple of items. So at this time, the time is 5:39, this board is going to go into closed session. It is now 5:55, and we're back in open session. Let the record reflect that Andrew Gonzalez joined the meeting at 5:40 during closed session. Okay, we were on item three. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of property award for property and casualty insurance, boiler and machinery, inland marine, and flood. RFP number 17, Bureau of Ways, Dash 66. Dr. Gonzalez.
For the trustees, this item was tabled at the regular board meeting on Monday, August 21st, 2017, pending further review, analysis, evaluation by the consultant, our insurance consultant. As requested by the Board of Trustees, the property and casualty proposals were forwarded to SWBC for evaluation and for a recommendation. Adam Payton, PNC consultant at SWC, has conducted the evaluation and is here to present his analysis and recommendation. Mr. Payton.
Thank you all very much for your time. We were able to take a look at both of the proposals from the two different agents. Based on our analysis, we were able to come to a conclusion that the proposal from McGriff was more advantageous for the district, based on a couple of different factors. Most importantly, the difference in premium between the two. Depending on the AOP level that you'd like to purchase at, either at 175-
What was that word?
AOP, AOP, all other perils. Sorry. Depending on which level of sublimit that the, if the board chose to go with McGriff, would present between either about $100,000 to $200,000 in premium savings over the other proposal. The sublimits for the named storms were both at $75 million, so we kind of had apples to apples there. There was a major difference in the all other perils category, which was between the two kind of the significant difference. The quote from Mr. Montalvo included limits up to the total insurable value that the district has for its properties. McGriff quoted theirs up to two different options, one being $175 million, the other being $275 million. So based on our consultative analysis of it, we still feel that the $275 million limit from McGriff is adequate for the proposed risk tolerance for Weslaco ISD. So all the AOP sublimit at $275 million would include items such as wind, hail, fire, lightning. If you had $275 million based on the strategic outlay of your properties, it would take almost a world-ending type event to ever get to 400, to get to $275 million. It would be something that we're having to deal with and probably not worrying about insurance at that point. That's why we feel that with the, with the sublimited AOP limits, coupled with the significant premium savings, we believe McGriff is an advantage over the other quote. Further, McGriff is also a very sophisticated agency, no respect to the, to the other agency, but they have in-house claims, loss control, things that would be assets to the district above and beyond what was in the other quote. I would love for them to have, to come back out, do risk evaluations in every property to make sure we don't need to change or increase anything. And they have all that, all that in-house. So what would be included in the price that we're, we're shown in the quotes? Another agenda item that was asked for us to, to discuss was the ability to appoint the agent. And now, I believe the legal side of it would be something that your attorney would obviously need to discuss with you, but we wanted to strategically point out a possible moral hazard, and I, please don't get scared by that word, it's an insurance term, that if you were to take one quote from another agent and give it to another one, there is an, it would be a resounding call to the rest of the state that I think would be very detrimental to the district in the long term. I'm not comfortable with, with putting the district in that type of situation. So in conclusion, that's our reasons why we're recommending McGriff for, for this, for this proposal.
I'd like to ask a question. Maybe you could explain a little more.
Of course.
What's the difference between a sublimit, an AOP, and the limits, the total limits?
So the total limit is the, what all your property combined is worth. So a carrier, in, in your RFP, we went out and said, we want, we have total insurable value of $438 million, give or take. We asked for about $380 million in coverage. That's what the district requested. That doesn't mean that the carriers have to come out and give you a quote based on what you requested. And that's why we see the $75 million for the named storm, the sublimited for the McGriff quote at $275 million. So you requested something close to your total insurable value, however, the market said, based on our underwriting guidelines and our risk appetite, this is what we're willing to provide to the district.
So you're telling me that, that we asked for less coverage than the property that we own? Is that correct?
Correct.
So we asked for 300 and what?
I believe it was around $380 million. I'd have to-
Or $400 million.
So it was, yes.
We did not ask for coverage up to $435 million?
I don't, I don't believe so.
The statement of values is what we, that, we said that this is the amount we requested. The amount that Mr. Payton's referring to is on one sheet, we did list almost $400 million, but that was a mistake that, that we made on the RFP with the limits. So technically, yes, that's what we asked for on one sheet, but the rest of the RFP indicated up to $435 million, or $432 million and change.
Which is a very common thing, just because-
Did it ask for up to, or did it ask for $435 million?
It was up to $435 million, based on the schedule of values that was presented.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm having some issues here. And it's real simple that, that I own a couple of businesses, and when I insure my property, I insure full value. Of course, I don't own half a billion dollars' worth of properties.
Yes, sir.
I've never heard of this type of insurance where you insure less than what you own. I asked Dr. Rivera, and he's been in the school business for a very long time, and he has, he's always insured full also. Mikey, last time when we talked here, I asked you, are we bidding apples to apples? And you said, yes, everything's the same, there's no difference. And if you're telling me that one company's covering $435 million, and the other one is covering $175 million, there is a big difference in, in the insurance coverage.
Well, it's a per occurrence limit. The entire $432 million is insured.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
But we're talking a per occurrence limit of $175 million or $275 million. Like Mr. Payton mentioned, the possibility of, you know, of that, of losing our entire, you know, every building is, is a catastrophic in nature.
But-
So it's an under, so it's an underwriting issue.
In our RFP, did we ask for less coverage than the $435 million? That is my question.
No.
And we will, we will, we will-
There was, there was one, there was one page where there, where there was a typo, and I made it, and I, and I believe it was listed at 380, almost $400 million. So on one sheet, so yes, I made a typo on that.
But you really-
But that doesn't, but that doesn't affect the overall, what was submitted and what was requested.
Okay. Well, it really does. You know, I know that you, you, you don't look at it on that side, but I'm looking at it on this side, and it really does. I mean, if I'm asking for one thing and I'm getting another, then there is a difference.
But please note, Mr. Lopez, that there is a speculation in the RFP. It's clearly stated that proposals, that alternate versions of the proposals may be submitted, either higher values that we're asking for or lower values that we're asking for. That's, that's language in the RFP.
Okay.
So it gives individuals or companies, you know, they may not be able to give us this, they may give us more, they may give us less, but we evaluate it as such.
You know, last week when I asked you, Mike, why is the difference in price? What is this $200,000 though? You answered me. Do you remember what you told me?
I, you asked me why was so, is so-
Why the difference in price? Do you remember what you told me?
No, I don't.
You said volume.
Well, the, the-
You said the volume that the company, the company buys is, is much more than what Montalvo buys. So that is where the $200,000-
That is, that is a speculation that I was making as to why.
You never brought up, and you never told me that the, that the prices, that we're getting less coverage than full coverage.
We're getting, we're not getting less coverage, Mr. Lopez.
Okay, you just told me that we're getting 275, or $175 million, and I believe that is per year?
$175 million sublimit per occurrence.
Per occurrence, per year?
Per occurrence, sir.
So we get $175 million how many times?
As per occurrence?
It's for a, it's actually for a calendar year.
For a calendar year?
Yes.
Okay.
That's an, that's an aggregate limit.
So what you're telling me, I'm not buying, then I'm not buying 435 million. How much am I buying?
Total, you're buying 435 million.
Correct.
But you have a sublimit, a per occurrence sublimit of 175 or 275 million. So if every campus were to suffer damage individually, then those are different, those are different occurrences.
Then why do we even ask for $435 million in insurance?
We, because that's what our total insurable value is.
Okay, clear this up for me, Mike, because I'm still lost. And I'm, I'm going to go back to layman's terms.
Okay.
And the way I, and then you tell me if I'm wrong. If I have a house that's worth $500,000, I'm going to buy $500,000 with insurance.
Sure.
Then I have a sublimit, and if I buy a sublimit for $175,000?
Well, you're, it's, you're not, there, you're not really, because you have one house. We have numerous different properties.
Okay, I have two houses.
Either way. So let's say if you have, so if you have 10 houses, you buy a half a million dollar sublimit because of the probability that all 10 houses are going to go?
So I'm gambling, is what you're telling me?
Well, you're not gambling, you're-
And I understand what he said that-
You're managing risk.
That the, the possibility of it happening is almost zero.
Your managing risk is what you're doing.
But my, my point is this, did we make it clear on our RFP of what we wanted? And if we did, we got problems.
Well, we did. And there's also, like I mentioned, there's also a caveat in the RFP that mentions, you know, bidders may propose different proposals, different higher or lower limits, and that they will be evaluated. So basically, you know, we, we offer different companies to make a proposal that's, you know, that, you know, is most advantageous to us.
And, and to kind of go back to where you said, most school districts buy full limits, I, I don't see that. Some do. Usually when they're in the 100 to 125 million in total insurable value, but when you get to 400, 500, Northeast ISD, which we, we work with, it's 1.8 billion, and they do not buy 1.8 billion. It would be financially unfeasible. So that's where you're, where we typically see those sublimited areas. And both of them, both had the named storm sublimited to 75 million. So you're not getting on both of them, up to the 400 and change, on, on either one of them for a hurricane that comes through.
Let me ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
If we had a hurricane, like what happened in Houston?
Yes, sir.
It happened here. Okay, so you have two coverages with these two firms. Which of these firms would the district get a better, better coverage, better money returned to us, of these two, the way it is right here?
If it's a hurricane? They both, they both proposed 75 million in limits, so the McGriff proposal would be cheaper. So based on that, because you're getting in, in that very specific scenario, you're getting in apples to apples.
So regardless of whether it's water, whether it's wind?
If it's hurricane-related, I mean, that's a named storm, so it gets, it gets lumped into, into all of that.
What about tornadoes?
Tornadoes would be under the AOP, the all other perils.
And we're covered for $435 million?
In the Montalvo quote, yes, sir.
And what about the other quote?
Up to either 175 million or 275 million.
Okay.
Now going back to the per occurrence, so 175 or 275, if that's used up with one storm, one disaster, we're, that's it for the year?
Correct.
We're not having any additional coverage the rest of the year?
That's, that's the way I read the quotes, yes.
Could you repeat that? His question's a per occurrence sublimit. I didn't see a max on the proposal.
Typically, it's an aggregate for the year. They want to pay you 275 million for that entire year. Otherwise, it would be, if you did it for every occurrence, it would be hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars you could, that's typically how we see it, and that's how I read it when I, when I reviewed the quotes. Mike, Mike may have a different opinion on that, but-
So if it's, if it's used up in month one, you know, that, that's it? We don't have any other sublimit coverage for the rest of the year, the rest of the 11 months?
Based on my analysis, yes, sir.
On both proposals?
On both, yes.
But ones for 435 and the other ones for 175 or 275?
For the AOP, yes, sir.
I think that's what's confusing me. I think, because there's two different interpretations, and I mean, no disrespect to either of you, I'm just trying to figure it out. Mr. De La Rosa told me that it's a per, per peril. So something happened in Wesco High, then something happened in Wesco East, it was 175 per each campus, but now your interpretation is it's 175 for both.
Yes, sir. That is my interpretation.
Per year. Now you, you made a statement, Adam, in regards to the choosing of a, of an agent, that we would possibly get less participation in regards to bids by insurance companies.
Yes, sir.
We only got two this time, is that correct, Mike?
Only two.
And on our stop-loss, two?
Two.
You know, so we're already there.
And it, absolutely. But that doesn't mean in the future that other people wouldn't want to come and bid.
Well, you need, you need to help us get better.
Agreed.
I mean, that's what we, we hired our consultant for, and we need to get more bids, because I mean, even, even my small little business, I get five, six, eight, 10 bids on all our insurance.
And it's, it's, it's hard to get carriers to come down, down to the valley and bid. I mean, you're a tier-two school. That, that right there makes carrier scary. Watch what's happening in Houston and Rockport and Port Aransas.
Adam, how many companies are out there that insure school districts?
I'd probably say in total 20 to 40, somewhere in that range.
How many companies are out there that insure GCs, concrete?
What's a GC?
General contractors.
Hundreds, maybe.
Hundreds. So municipalities, school districts, it's a specified, it's a special, I don't want to say special, but-
It's a niche.
There's not so many players in the game or-
It's a very niche industry, yes, sir.
Andrew, in the past, I've been here for 10 years, we've had more than two bids on insurance.
On, no, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, you have in the past.
Okay. Property and casualty, the last time it went out, three years ago, we only received two bids.
And before that?
And before that, we received two.
So in the last six years, you've had-
In the last six years, I believe, the last six years, six years ago, we received three. It went to rebid, and then after the rebid, we received two.
I know, I know we've received more bids, Mike.
Okay, well, I, I remember the numbers.
I remember two.
Okay. I'll, I'll look it up and send you an exact figure in the update.
Good. Well?
What's the administration recommendation?
Administration's recommendation is the same as it was on August 21st. It is for option four. You have the consultant's recommendation, option three.
If I could ask Mr. Re, Mr. Payton, sorry, one more question.
Yes, sir.
If, I guess it's because there's two different interpretations going on about, about the limits of the AOP, that's, I guess I'm thinking about which way I'll vote. And my question is, if, if you're proposing that, if you believe that the AOP is an, is an aggregate amount, right, and it doesn't equal to the total amount of the district's insurable property, why recommend a lower, that lower amount than the full value of the insured?
That's a good question. It's based on risk tolerance and kind of insurance knowledge of how storms occur, hurricanes occur, how in the proposal that we had done, we mapped out all your locations. So you're spread out geographically enough to where a tornado is, you know, maybe a mile wide, two miles wide, and does some crazy things. So if you take five to 10 schools and add them up, you're probably talking 150 to 200 million for the worst-case scenario tornado loss. And it's, it's basically our recommendation to take that, it's, but that's my, I don't have skin in the game like the school does. So I completely understand, your risk tolerance may not be what I recommend as a risk tolerance. I'm, it's, it's the district and the taxpayers' monies. If you're comfortable with 400 million, then absolutely, I understand that. But based on past performance, history, 100-year statistical analysis of how damages occur, the likelihood that you'll need 300, $275 million plus is a low-risk occurrence.
So I'm, I'm trying to, I guess to make sure I understand you fully, it's basically, we're taking on a smaller premium payment for us because we're betting that we won't have maximum damage in our district.
Absolutely.
As opposed to paying a higher premium and assuming that we could have a full, like district-wide destruction?
Absolutely.
Is that my understanding?
That is, you're 100% correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you, that was my question.
Mr. Santos, what do we have budget-wise? What did you set aside for this insurance?
I don't remember to be honest with you, that amount.
Do you usually go by the previous years?
It's pretty close, what we have.
750, 750,000 or less.
Which is, okay.
So simple question, the difference between two is how much? If I remember correctly, yes. The difference between two proposals, what's the difference?
The totals are-
On the recommendation?
The recommendation is-
Option four. So what is the difference between both?
Price-wise?
It's about $200,000, option four versus option number three, or option number two, if you will, which is the, the incumbent quote with the 5% name storm deductible. So you have current, and then option one, option two, three, and four. So it's about $200,000.
Little bit under 200.
And difference between three and four, which three is being recommended by the consultant, right?
Yes.
And four by administration?
It's about 78,000, 78,750 between three and four.
And it's about $100,000, 100, 100 million more, and 2% deductible versus 5%?
That's correct.
So I understand. So you're asking for option four, the consultant had option three. So in option three, what is the difference between, option three between the two proposals? How much the difference?
110,000.
110,000.
Oh, wait. Ask the question again, Mr. Rivera.
Okay. The consultant is recommending option three.
Mm-hmm.
And you're recommending option four. So if, if, what is the difference between option three and the two proposals?
Mike, is that correct?
It's 110.
110?
110,000. I, I don't know, I'm just, I don't think we're comparing apples to apples.
That's my problem. Any more questions? Comments?
If you don't think that we're comparing apples to apples, what do you think we should do about it? I mean, what, how do you, how do you feel?
The board has to decide.
What was that?
Yeah, the board has to decide.
Yeah. Now, in the past, you've always purchased full coverage?
I just want to, I want to reaffirm to the board that both proposals are, are good, okay? So our, our analysis on it was, of course, you know, based on the cost, you know, cost-based analysis. So if the board's not comfortable with one way, you know, any one of these is going to do the job for us. I have all my confidence that, you know, the sublimits are, you know, are, will suffice. But then again, you know, if the board feels differently, then of course, the other proposal is, you know, does well, will do as well, so.
Yeah. Only issue is that they're not the same bids. One of them's for 275 million, and the other one is for 438 million. You know, that's-
Now, the difference, when we, when we say 110,000, the difference, that's option one versus option three, right? If we do option two versus option three, the difference is 70, 75?
78. Mm-hmm.
You'd have to compare it, Dr. Rodriguez, to option, option one to option three. Option number two gives you a 5%, so if you're going to compare option two, then you need to compare option two to option four.
Andrew, you're in the insurance business. The AOP per occurrence, is that per occurrence or is it aggregate, in your opinion?
It depends on the company. Normally, when stuff goes out, you have a per occurrence limit, and when it reads aggregate, it shows that there's an aggregate. In this case, it doesn't show that it's aggregate other than per occurrence.
Okay. So if I may, if you take option one with the 1% name storm deductible, and of course, your full sublimits, it comes out to $766,790. Compared that with, one, two, option number three with a 2% name storm deductible, the 275 million dollar AOP limit, and increase the flood limits to $25 million, that comes out, that's the total way at the bottom, is $656,816. That's a difference of approximately $110,000 if you're buying the top two.
And if you go to option two and option four?
Option two and option four, that's over two, about 210, 220,000.
When was the last time we had a tornado?
We've never filed a tornado claim in the valley, or at least at Wesco ISD.
Are you aware of any that have touched down?
No.
My concern is the price-cost. I understand that we're at 275 and the full premium amount. Well, we also have a responsibility as a board, and, you know, we've, I, I think we've done our due diligence as far as having the consultants really evaluate the two quotes. But it is our fiduciary responsibility to save the district money when we can, making sure that we are covered. You know, the 275- You know, the, the two-seventy-five, I, I just find it hard, other than a hurricane, flooding is flood, it's totally different, and they're apples-to-apples on both. So really, you're going based off of, can you share, can you save some money? So, going back to Patrick's question, I give people the option, one percent, two percent, three percent, four percent, five percent. It's in deductibles, I believe in high deductibles. That's my opinion. You know, I, I have to sit here, although Mr. Montalvo is, is a dear friend, I also have to look at the community and, and the school district as to what's best. And if our consultant, who we've utilized for every insurance decision that, that has come about before us, i- is saying to go the other way, whereas, as far as option th, option three, to increase it at two-seventy-five, then, then maybe this is, you know, the one time that, that although we love to stay local, we, we, we have to really take a look at it. Being that we increased the teachers' pay raise, we, we trying to do everything else for our facilities, we're trying to use all this money as best we can. So, I mean, I, I think we should just kinda just take a vote so we can proceed.
And, you know, and what Andrew says is very true, you know, we have a financial responsibility to our, our stakeholders, that we do save their money, uh, because we've done a lot of things this particular year. And we're planning also, in the Dr. Canales' vision, also to improve other things within the next four years.
The only issue that I have, gentlemen, with this whole insurance thing, is if it was, the R F P was clear on the wording going out, then I would have no, no, no dog in this fight.
Correct, correct.
The only issue here is that we have two different types of insurances. We have one that's covering a hundred-and-seventy-five million, or two-hundred-and-seventy-five million, and the price goes up from one-seventy-five to two-seventy-five. And then we have one that's cover, covering the full four-hundred-and-thirty-five million. You know, so, and Andrew, you're correct in saying that, uh, we need to save money for the district. Yet, and will we get a, a catastrophe that will call for the full insurance? I don't know. And I don't think anybody really knows. I think we can guess and hope that it doesn't happen. But I know that we, we got bid, bids in two different ways. And the, and the deal is that, that, uh, we've been with this type of insurance forever. That's what we've had, full coverage. And, uh, either it wasn't explained right, it didn't go out right, and I don't know. I just don't wanna have any, any, any problems going forward. So, that being said...
One, one last question, one last question. When does the current insurance expire?
At the end of the month.
At the end of, which is tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow at midnight. We need to have something in place.
You know, you know, just, just, just curious, is there a possibility? Just, just dialogue here, just, just, is it, is it a possibility to go ahead and extend a month or two? Reject everything and rebid, is that an option?
I wouldn't recommend it, Dr. Rivera. We, we, we really need to make a decision tonight. Uh, insurance companies, they could issue a moratorium on coverage tomorrow, and, and Adam, I don't know if you wanna jump in on that.
Yeah, I mean, there's other, there's other hurricanes and...
Do you please?
Okay, and if, and if I may...
But we're covered if you extend it for another month or two?
It's possible. There's no guarantee that they would allow that. And you're on a very small timeline to make that decision. Further, there are other disturbances out in coming off of Africa right now. Does that hit Florida? Does it go into the Gulf? Does it do what Harvey did where it went, you know, into Mexico and then come back into the Gulf?
And if I may, uh...
One, one last question. You know, I agree with all of you. You, all of us here have good comments. You know, I wanna save money too. But I wanna make sure that, that by saving money, we're comparing apples to apples. And I find out that we, we, we buy this one, then find out that we're not gonna get full coverage if something happens.
I just, uh...
I can see both sides.
I, I, I just, I sent a text to the, uh, to the agent that submitted the counterproposal. His office is in Houston, and as you know, you know what they're dealing with in the Houston area. So, uh, they have all hands on deck, uh, in the Houston office. And I texted him the question that we had, that, that Mr. Peyton and I were, were discussing. And the, the per occurrence limit is not an aggregate limit, okay? That, that's, that's what he responded. So, um, building one goes up, uh, up to a hundred-and-seventy-five million coverage. Uh, another peril, a couple of days later, up to a hundred-and-seventy-five, or two-hundred-and-seventy-five, whatever the board decides.
Clarify that, 'cause that's a big...
What about a building grid?
It's a big difference, I, it would...
So, Adam, now, now knowing that it's not an aggregate...
It's even more advantageous of a proposal.
Now, would you leave it at the...
The only aggregate is on the flood limit, uh, that he clarified, which is pretty common in, in all policies.
Now that you know that it's a per occurrence, per anything that may happen at a different time, do you still recommend the two-seventy-five or the one-seventy-five?
I still recommend the two-seventy-five.
Okay, Mr. Pettis, was the R F P followed?
I mean, an R F P was put out.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So, everybody has the same information?
Yeah.
Okay. When we went out for the help, the R F P was followed, right? There was a deviation in it where the company put in agents when we specifically requested in the R F P not to include any. And we went ahead and we went with it because they said they would pull their bid.
I think they, they included enrollers, is what they called them, they said they didn't...
Right, so they're agents. So, again, the R F P was correct, correctly done by the school district?
So, so the R F P says, "Proposals are to be submitted in accordance with these specifications," and I'm reading from the, the, um, the proposal. "Any restrictions, deviations, or other modifications with either restricted or broader coverage should be noted in the proposals. In the absence of notification of these modifications, companies will be held to the specifications." That's, that's the language that I think is being...
Thank you, uh, Mr. Pettis. Uh, Adam?
Yes, sir.
So, now listening to the R F P, does your recommendation still say the same?
Okay, it says broader? Broader only?
So, if it's, if any devia, any restrictions, deviations, or other modifications with either restricted or broader coverage, uh, they should be noted in the proposal. So somebody can fit broader or restricted.
And to hopefully kinda take it a little bit further, I, I think it is an apples-to-apples comparison in that it gives coverage for all the perils that you're looking for. The, the non-apples-to-apples part is the sub-limits. And I, I, I know that is, that goes back to insurance, and, you know, we do this for a living, so we enjoy it. But it's all about risk tolerance. So I think it is an apples-to-apples comparison of the perils that it covers. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison in the cost and the sub-limits requested.
Okay. Thank you.
Adam, one last question, I'm sorry, I just saw it. In the deductible A O P, fire vandalism, vandalism on the property, there's a difference in deductible, a hundred thousand and fifty thousand, is that correct?
Yes. So the McGriff has a lower...
Has a lower deductible of fifty thousand?
So you have a hellstorm and it costs a hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred and fifty, let's do it at a hundred and fifty. They're both gonna pay. One's gonna pay a hundred thousand of that a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar loss, the other one's gonna pay a hundred thousand. And that would, again, be another advantageous portion of the McGriff, uh, quote.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
It's a toughie.
Hmm?
It's a toughie, do decide.
I'll make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation.
Hold a second. Hold on, okay. We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar to approve administration's recommendation, uh, to go with, uh, which, which, with the one-seventy-five?
No, the option three, as, as proposed by administration with the two-seventy-five million sub-limit, uh, as proposed by our consultant as well.
Right. Administration's recommendation is option four.
Yes.
On here.
Option four, but you can add the two-hundred-and-seventy-five million sub-limit.
Our recommendation was option four. In option four, you can't add the judicial.
You can't add the two-seventy-five sub-limit, so.
So which one do you wanna do, Mike? Andrew?
Option four with increasing the sub-limit to two-seventy-five and the flood to twenty-five.
Okay. We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar. Oscar, is that your second also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, to go with, uh, administration's recommendation and increasing the limits to two-seventy-five, and, uh, what was the other one?
Twenty-five million on the, on the flood.
How much is that?
Twenty-five million on the flood.
And twenty-five million on the flood. Any discussion on that? What's the difference between, uh, three and four? Is that just a deductible on the name storm?
The name storm deductible, two percent and five percent is what I read. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct.
Currently, we have a five percent?
Currently, it's five percent, yes, sir.
Mikey, on option three and four, A O P says one-seventy-five and one-seventy-five on both of them. Is there a typo there?
Uh, give me one second.
Oh, there's not a typo.
It's not a typo, it's correct. It's one-seventy-five, one-seventy-five. But if you go to the bottom, uh, of the column, it says increase two-seventy-five million sub-limit, then that's the extra premium. Increase flood limit to twenty-five million, that's the extra premium. And then the total premium, in this case, with, which, what Mr. Gonzalez, um, uh, recommended is five-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, sixty-six dollars. That's the final one, right? That's the final.
That's the final one. Dr. Rodriguez, I think the difference between option three and four is a hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty, give or take, most of the minutes that we would, an additional savings, so.
We have a motion on the table, gentlemen. All those in, uh, favor, signify by saying aye, and any show of hands?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four. Motion, motion passes. All those, huh? All those opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed. Okay, let's move on to item number four. Discussion on possible action for the board to appoint an agent for property in catch with insurance, boiler, and machinery inland marine and flood, Dr. Canales.
Okay, this, we were asked to, uh, place this item on the agenda by our board president, and I don't know if there's a need for it.
Yeah, um, I believe during, uh, during our closed session, we discussed, we, we had some issues with that. So I'm gonna pull it, and it'll be a non-action item.
Correct.
Item number five, discussion on possible action to approve budget amendments, Andres.
Board of trustees, we're recommending that you approve some budget amendments. Mr. Sanchez is here to discuss those amendments.
Dr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, members of the board, we enclosed, uh, we included this agenda item to, for the board to approve these four budget amendments that in essence are the reversal of four budget amendments approved on the August twenty-first board meeting that we had. When we prepared those budget amendments, uh, for that meeting, we have prepared it for the meeting that was supposed to be taking place on August fourteen. And then we were gonna prepare the final amended budget the following week. So if we put them all together, when we prepared the final amended budget, we did not consider that those other amendments hadn't been posted yet, 'cause they hadn't been approved. So if we had posted on the ledger, all the amendments that you approved, the final amended budget, plus those four amendments, our final amended budget would not have been, would not end up the way you approved it. So we cannot have like that. Since this meeting came up, luckily, I'm bringing this agenda item to the board for you, you can approve these amendments, which in essence reverse the other four amendments you approved on the twenty-first, and we recommend approval.
So there are just three?
Four. Yes, three in the top and one in the bottom.
Right. Make the motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Siroto to approve the budget amendments. Any discussion?
So now we're, budget is set?
The budget will end up, the final amended budget approved, yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Discussion on possible, discussion regarding, uh, Hurricane Harvey impact on W I S D. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, on Friday, August the twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, staff was released early from work due to the pending expectation of inclement weather from Hurricane Harvey. Staff safety and the safety of their families is of utmost importance to us. The anticipated significant rainfall at that time and the strong winds prompted the early release. Several other I S Ds, and I'd like to thank our H R department. They quickly surveyed other I S Ds to see what they were doing. Eight I S Ds did close early. Two, uh, institutions of higher learning closed early that day. And six school districts in our area closed for the entire day. So we decided, I decided, after working with cabinet, like, thank you two for huddling that day and getting plans ready, in case of the worst scenario, we were ready for Monday. But, you know, made the decision to, let's release early, let's let, have our staff, um, get home safe, take care of their families, and make sure we're ready in the case of Hurricane, um, Har- Harvey changing direction, as hurricanes do sometimes. So while our thoughts and our prayers are with the victims across our state, and, you know, like many of you, have family members in the Houston area and, and Fort Lebaka, Corpus Christi area. And we're doing some things as a district to support them in terms of, uh, drives, food drives and clothing drives. And our cabinet members and our principals are working on that. So while our prayers go out, you know, to them, uh, we are happy that we didn't experience the wrath of Harvey in our area.
Do you know anything about the canned food drive at the football game this Friday?
We, we have some information for you that we can share, and I'd like to call Ms. Peters, Mrs. Peterson, who has a list of things going on across campuses, including the drive at, uh, the game.
Dr. Canales, the staff, does it have to make up their half-day or anything?
Well, what we're gonna, what we're gonna do, what we're gonna do is, um, at an upcoming board meeting, bring a resolution. We looked at local policy. Uh, we can bring a resolution to you for public safety, you know, health and public safety, and for morale for faculty and staff.
Okay.
And, um, retention of faculty and staff. We'll bring a resolution to you that you will approve, authorize, and then we can move forward, and there's no need to make up time.
Okay.
There's nothing more important than showing our staff that we care as a, as a, as a district about their safety and about their families. So, that was a, that was a good call on that.
And we're in a very caring district, to answer your question, Mr. Kennedy. We have both Coach Real House, who took the lead in cabinets, that put me in for this, and for the drive on Friday. So, you're in, Coach.
He'll talk about Friday first.
Yeah, and then talk about Friday, then Mrs. Peterson collected information from all the schools. Everybody's doing something.
So, good evening, uh, Mr. Lopez, members of the board, Dr. Canales. For Friday, we have our, our first home game opener, Wesco East, versus Sheraland. Uh, we did discuss a cabinet to try to do something to, you know, as a relief fund. So what we're doing is, uh, with the help of Dr. Cantu and staff, he's gotten the whole student body involved. We will be doing a helmet drive and a can drive, this kinda cash, cash and cans drive is what we're calling it. So we've, I've coordinated with our, with our warehouse, we're gonna have pallets, the pallet jacks. We're gonna have boxes at the entrance, at the gates, a- as you enter the stadium, both, both sides. We created a flyer that we blasted on media, uh, Twitter, Facebook, the whole, the whole nine yards through Mindy's office. So, uh, and, and Mr. Oble, they've been working very closely with us. And we also shared it with Sheraland. We contacted Sheraland today, uh, they're more than willing to help, they're excited about the opportunity. So, at different times of the game, probably at the end of each quarter, uh, we're gonna send an announcement on the Jumbotron, and we'll send our student body up there with some customized boxes where they can walk up the aisles and, hopefully, fans can drop some, some, uh, dollars, or two dollars, or fifty dollars, or a hundred dollars. We'll go to Mr. Patrick Kennedy for a hundred dollars. In the boxes. And then at the end, we're gonna collect, and then Mr. Dr. Cantu is working with Channel Five right now also for the, for the food drive. So for the cans, we're gonna, we're gonna put them in pallets, we're gonna lift them with the, with the pallet jacks, put them in our, on our warehouse trucks, probably store them in Wesco Warehouse for the night, uh, for, through the weekend. And then Monday morning, deliver them to Channel Five or one of those areas where they're collecting numerous amounts. them to Channel Five or one of those areas where they're collecting numerous amounts. So, that's the plan, so...
Good plan. Sounds great. Good.
And I sent an email to the principals this morning, and some haven't responded because they don't have time to look at their email till the end of the day, but almost every other, almost every campus is doing something. So, some are collecting just cash, and that'll be go to probably American Red Cross. Some are collecting items on a list that I sent out on Monday. We looked at the internet and saw who was collecting and what was needed. And so, I would say every campus by tomorrow morning will respond to that they're doing something. And we'll be getting those items to Payne Dealer Group, HEB, the hospital, the different collection sites, the Rio Grande Valley Food Bank is collecting. So, we'll get those items to those locations so that they can get to the places that are needed, and it might be Rockport, it might be Port LeBaca, we have all kinds of places close by that were hit hard by it, including Houston, so...
There, I think I read a news that there's a district in the valley that says we'll take any student from those places. Was it McAllen, I see?
And we've received several notices from the Texas Education Agency. We're doing the same thing. A lot of the families who may be moving into the area are displaced, may be homeless. So, we've got direction, a lot of flexibility from the agency to be able to accept students. And we've had a couple, I know Mr. Garcia was collecting.
Several campuses have reported that they have moved in. Had students enrolled.
Yes.
That's good.
That was going to be my next comment, Dr. Canales. There is approximately, or I heard there's a report that there are apparently two, over two hundred thousand homes that have been affected by flood or completely destroyed. Two hundred thousand homes, and those people are going to have to go somewhere to live. As you said, mentioned earlier, that some of the students are already arriving here at our doorsteps, and I would guess, guess to say that there's more on the way. You know, so, if there's any preparation or any advertising that we need to do for, so that these children know that they're here. And I think you had mentioned also that TA is giving you a lot of flexibility on accepting...
Yeah, they're sending memos about, you know, the number of families, the amitizations, you know, get them into school, give them the thirty days. If they don't have all the documents, get them in, that we're communicating with staff. And then, of course, you know, the welcoming environment, you know? And even though they may be here just temporarily, we don't know how long it is, but we want them to receive a solid education, be part of our family.
Will you keep the board informed as to the numbers of people coming in that were affected by the storm, and if there is going to be extra need or something that the board needs to act on, that way we will not be caught short or be caught behind?
Can displaced students participate in UIL sports? Coach? Can these students displaced participate in UIL?
If they're considered homeless, I believe that the UIL guidelines...
Yeah, there will be some, I'm sure that once that starts to happen, the UIL will put out a statement on the students because it's not their fault. Like Mr. said, yeah, they're considered homeless, so more than likely, they will be, and I will have a screening table if they can run five-four. They're on.
And we'll double check on the social media and make sure that we have the welcome message out.
It helps kids feel included when they can be on some kind of board or something like that. I thought that'd be a good idea.
And it does, it's also impacted, like even food services, like we know tomorrow, our boys and girls will come to brus us and not have orange juice available, you know, because of things getting in to us from Houston, so...
Westco High, any chance to pick up a game? Westco High, any chance to pick up a game later in the year?
Fortunately, as the schedule... And that's what I was looking at right now, because I figured that might be a question, sir. But we tried very hard, as we found out that George Ranch was not going to be able to play because of their situation, we tried to line up another game. The only other opponent that was potentially available was Edinburgh. And so, during the negotiations of trying to figure out when, we figured out that it would be too hard to play a game because of tickets and all that nature, but a scrimmage was a possibility. But the two coaches were not in agreement as to the schedule and what was beneficial to them. Right during that, during that time of negotiations, I received a message from the athletic director from Edinburgh that, as per the administration, they would rather not play. So, that kind of ended our negotiation, and that was, that was early Monday morning, sir.
Thank you, Coach.
Another thing we need to be aware of, that being given the fact that two, over two hundred thousand homes were affected, there's not enough workmen to fix all these in a month, two months, three months. This is going to be years, you know? So, any of the students that do come, there's a possibility that they will be here for a while, if not completely relocate as was the case in when...
Katrina.
Katrina, Louisiana. You know, so, we need, we need to stay aware, up to date, and I don't know if maybe Melissa Scalon can stay informed with the local authorities as to any new families that are relocating, that way we can be prepared. Another thing also, Doc, that I would like to see is have your counselors look into, and I know they're prepared, but maybe there's some training they can have on talking to these children that have been through such a dramatic experience, and just to get our staff prepared for those kids.
Good point.
Can you put on the update, the enrollment for the district?
We can. We plan to do that on Friday.
Be how we are compared to last year after the first week.
Yes. Okay, so, this is, this is a discussion item, so there's no action? Any other comments, gentlemen? The next item is item number seven. It's closed meeting to discuss item A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Number one, employment of personnel. Number two, resignations. Number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. B, consultation with attorney regarding A, pending or contemplated litigation, B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the Westco Independent School District under the Texas disciplinary rules of personal conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. Number one, consultation with legal counsel regarding the possible amendment to release amendment in connection, excuse me, to release agreement in connection with the complaint filed by A Valdez under WSD policy DGBA local. The time is now six fifty-two, and this board is going to close session. I'll give a chance to change the tapes. Item A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Number one, employment of personnel, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, I recommend that you approve the recommendation of contracts for certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
Second.
I have a motion by Andrew and a second by Patrick to approve the hires as presented by administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number two is resignation, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, administration recommends that you approve the resignations, retirements of certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Motion by Andrew and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the resignations as presented by administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number three, deliberation regarding appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. I believe this is a non-action item?
Correct.
Correct? Non-action, item three. Then we move on to B, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the Westco Independent School District under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct or the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. Item one, consultation with legal counsel regarding possible amendment to release agreement in connection with the complaint filed by A Valdez under the WSD policy DBGA local.
I move to amend the release agreement in connection with the complaint filed by A Valdez as discussed with counsel.
Second.
We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to release the agreement in connection with the complaint filed by A Valdez under WSD policy DGBA local. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And I believe item number nine is adjournment.
Second.
The time now is seven twenty-six, this meeting is over. Thank you.
Thank you.